And begin, I'll call the meeting to order. I'll do the invocation and Councilman Jones, would you do the pledge for us, please?
Yes, sir.
Father, we come to you today with humble hearts, thankful hearts, Father, of how you watch over us and how you care for us and how you just keep your arms around us as individuals, as families, and as a community. We ask you, Father, to continue watching over us, continue giving us the wisdom and the knowledge and the guidance that we need to lead this city through these troubled times. Father, we just don't know the answers. We don't know the answers to all these things that we're facing. There's so many questions coming our way, but we know that you hold the answers to everything. And we just pray that you would have your way here in our community and you'd have your way in our lives. Thank you again for your protection. Christ's name we have.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our setup is a little different and you know the reason why. So, it's, uh, we're having to make adjustments as we get, try to work through these times. So, now we'll have a roll call.
Councilmember Robbins?
Here.
Councilmember Washington?
Here.
Councilmember Justice?
Here.
Councilmember Gant?
Here.
Councilmember Jones?
Here.
Mayor Willis?
Here.
You received in your package a copy of the minutes from the council meeting held on April the sixth, twenty twenty. Is there a motion to adopt?
To move.
Thank you for the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, if you don't want to say an aye?
Aye.
You don't want to oppose? Okay, those minutes have been approved. Under new business this evening, ordinance twenty twenty dash two, an ordinance to divide the city of Wutupka into five council districts and to provide for the election of a councilperson from each district and to provide for the election of the mayor at large with all districts voting at the Wutupka Civic Center. Then we have a request from Councilman Washington to allow District Two to vote at the MLK Recreation Center. This is a second read on this. All in favor? Any discussion?
Mayor, I would like to speak.
Okay. Let me go ahead and get a motion. Let me go ahead and get a, a motion and a second and then we'll speak to it. Okay? Get a motion.
To move.
Okay.
I would like to speak.
Let, let me get the second and then we'll have the discussion about a meeting.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion?
Yes, sir.
I would like to speak concerning this. This, uh, under the second reading is improper. Because the ordinance, ordinance was not read aloud at the last meeting. This has to lay over to the next meeting. I'm asking the city clerk to show in the minutes that I asked the mayor twice to let the clerk and the mayor to read the ordinance because the city attorney was not here. I asked the mayor twice. He's, he still did not recognize me. Now, I asked you the second time to let the clerk read it or you read it. Mayor, you responded back to me and said it is in your package. It states read. It was not read and can't pass tonight. This is not the second read.
It's only required to be read once or twice?
It's required to be read once, but knowing that's the first read and then the second time you have no way to second read it. Second time read it now. So, if we could read it now, but then the second read would have to be held over to the next meeting. He's right about that. If it wasn't read last time. So, you want me to read it?
Yes, sir.
Ordinance number twenty twenty dash two, in order to divide the city of Wutupka into five council districts and provide for the election of a councilperson from each district and to provide the election of the mayor at large. The order named by the city council of the city of Wutupka, Alabama, as follows. Section one. In accordance with section eleven forty-three-two of the Code of Alabama, the city of Wutupka is hereby divided into five single-member districts to be designated as District One, District Two, District Three, District Four, and District Five. Section two, the district limited areas within the city of Wutupka that are enclosed by the described lines that follow. Existing corporate limits as of the date of disorder, that's seven lines of streets, roadways, alleys, roadways, railroads, or extension thereof, parking lines, streams, creeks, rivers, and other lines as described in the means of mail description of district boundaries included as part of this order as shown on the graphic presentation referred to as the city of Wutupka twenty sixteen council district boundary and attached to, included as attachment one. Section three, at the municipal election in twenty twenty and every four years thereafter, the qualified electors residing in each of the above described districts of the city of Wutupka, Alabama, who are entitled to participate in such election shall elect one council member to the council, city council, for that district. Each council member so elected must be a bona fide elector of and must actually reside in the district from which they are qualified for election. Each such council member shall hold office for a period of four years or until a successor shall be elected and qualified or until such council member shall resign, die, or move their residence outside of said district or otherwise be removed from office. Section four, at the municipal election will be held during twenty twenty and every four years thereafter, the qualified electors residing in the city of Wutupka, Alabama, who are entitled to participate in such election, shall elect the mayor from at large. The mayor should be a bona fide elector of and must actually reside within the corporate limits of the city of Wutupka. The mayor shall hold office for a period of four years or until a successor shall be elected and qualified or until the mayor shall resign, die, or move his or her residence outside said city or otherwise be removed from office. Section five, this law shall not affect the police rights or tenure of office of the existing members of the city council or the mayor who shall continue to hold and discharge the duties of said office as is incumbent upon them or as may thereafter be made incumbent upon them by law until their successor shall be elected and qualified under this law. Section six, the following places are hereby designated voting places for each of the five election districts of the city of Wutupka, Alabama. District one, Wutupka Civic Center, four-ten South Main Street, Wutupka, Alabama. District two, Wutupka Civic Center, four-ten South Main Street, Wutupka, Alabama. District three, Wutupka Civic Center, four-ten South Main Street, Wutupka, Alabama. District four, Wutupka Civic Center, four-ten South Main Street, Wutupka, Alabama. District five, Wutupka Civic Center, four-ten South Main Street, Wutupka, Alabama. Section seven, all ordinances and specifically, specifically ordinance twenty sixteen dash four, twenty eleven dash eleven, twenty oh oh three dash one, ordinance ninety-six dash four, ordinance ninety-two dash two, ordinance eighty-seven dash twelve, and ordinance eighty-seven dash fourteen and or parts of ordinances that conflict with this ordinance are hereby repealed. Section eight, provisions of this ordinance are several. If any part of the ordinance is declared invalid or unconstitutional, such declarations shall not affect or influence remains. Section nine, this ordinance shall become effective upon adoption and publication as provided by law. District representation shall become effective the first Monday in November twenty twenty as stated in section eleven dash forty-three dash forty-four, Code of Alabama, nineteen seventy-five, as a amendment. First read.
So, let me carry it over to the next meeting.
Yes.
Mayor, can I, can I speak?
Yes, sir.
I have one here on the fact what the attorney reading that I am questioning that my District Two to remain at the Marlins Kingdom Recreation Center. Because this is a historic site and for over twenty-plus years, that's where it voted and always stayed in place and that District Two remain at the MLK Center.
So, you can state that amendment when he comes back up on the deal channel?
Yeah, so that'll be. Well, we won't vote on that tonight or the next meeting?
No, no. We'll carry it over to the next meeting. This being the first read, uh, the issues we had last time in trying to get the meeting out to the public, uh, so we'll, we'll go back and redo this and it'll be on the agenda for the next meeting.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Councilwoman Washington?
Yes, ma'am.
I, I think I'm just kind of confused. Why, because of it being, why do you want District Two voting separately from the other districts of Wutupka?
Okay. I would like the record showing I can use that as a, number one, I asked at the last meeting, who put this on the agenda? I asked the clerk, I didn't get an answer. I asked the mayor, I didn't get an answer. I did not request it. I represent District Two. District Two has been there, like I stated just now, for over twenty years since it started. I don't know, Mayor, did you put it on the agenda?
I didn't put it on the agenda, uh...
Mr. Clerk, did you put it on?
Clerk, here's the election clerk.
It has to be passed, uh, May twenty-fifth, so you can get it on there.
I understand, excuse me. I understand, but I haven't, I haven't worked on it supposed to pass, but I'm asking, who put it on there? I did request, that's my district. I did not request, who requested putting it on there? I didn't ask.
Did you request that your district, because your district normally votes at the fame center, did you request that it be put on the agenda to vote at the Civic Center? Okay. Did you have any requests?
Every district has been at the Civic Center except to, I don't remember if I've been in past elections it's been, but, uh, the only one that hasn't been at the Civic Center at least the last two elections is District Two, maybe farther back than that, I'm not too likely sure.
I'm just a little confused. I don't, I don't understand though why one district would not vote with the rest of the city.
To answer your question, Council, I'm responsible and represent District Two just because, you know, the rest of y'all, you don't hear me complaining because that's where you, so why are you going to make a issue because I want District Two to stay at the MLK Center? It's nothing that you understand. What, what do you want to understand? Because like Councilman saying, you know, everybody else in the last two has been voting too, it's been over twenty years we've always voted, we're at the MLK Center. And I'm asking that it remain, District Two remain at the MLK Center. That's all I'm asking. Y'all still at the Civic Center.
But I think what we're asking is, what is the reason for that district voting or your district voting separately from the rest of the city? Because what I've heard is, it's a historic building and that's why we need to vote from the rest of the city. I haven't heard a valid reason yet to why it should be held there.
Okay, Council, let's look at like that. Number one, it's a historic, uh, facility there. Number two, I haven't had residents or have them saying, hey, I would like to move out of the old place. That's why. No, it's, that's why. Do you hear me complaining about because she have yours at Civic Center school? Why? That's what y'all choose to do. Here's what I'm asking for, y'all want to make a big issue out of which all of that, leave it like it is, it's not a vote. That's all I'm asking for, you hear the support? Let's, let it stay at the MLK Center, that's all I'm asking.
So, you have had residents come to you and say, we want to vote at the MLK Center?
Yes. Because people would have to come wait over here on this side of the bridge to get somebody to write it. And someone barely, you know, when they get their check once a month, come and walk like a vagrant. So, what's, what's the issue with you about, uh, tell me why you figure it shouldn't stay, Council?
Why should it stay? Because of the last election, what happened?
Tell me what happened.
And the irregularities in the election that you have, that you were very...
Don't be specific, be specific.
I am being specific, the irregularities in the last election that happened at the voting precinct in District Two.
Okay.
That, you know...
Come here, sir.
I mean, you should want to move it more than anybody after that happened.
Say that again, make sure the clerk recall that I should what?
You should want to move it to the Civic Center.
You said, well, whether to move?
Anybody.
But I do not. That's why you got people working at the polls.
And I just want to make sure that the voters of District Two aren't questioning, why are we not voting with the rest of the city?
No, that, no, ma'am, no, that has not come up, no, no, not at all. What did you say?
I feel like we, as Wutupka as a city, we are all one city, we are all one people. If four districts are voting in one spot, then I think all the districts need to be.
That's your opinion.
Well, it is my opinion and my opinion is valid too.
Well, so is mine, but...
It is, but mine is too and I'm just stating my opinion.
I, I, I want you to, and I'm stating my opinion.
I understand, I'm listening.
The next thing is, it is, it's just a thing that when certain things come up, just like other ideas for, for recreation, that y'all voted against that. Leave District Two present. I'm not saying anything to talk to the rest of y'all who vote at the Civic Center. I'm proud for you. Let us be proud to continue to stay at the MLK Center. And going back to answer you and figure out, Council, you talking about what it took place? That's why you have people working at the poll. When they're working there to verify who he or she is and that's what it's supposed to vote. If there's a, a problem, such as you have a person that's in charge, he or she is called by, hey, so-and-so, da-da-da-da, that's what your name, then we vote it for you to ballot. That's why they go to classes. I'm asking.
Okay, I think we've had a good discussion. I think it'll be back on, yes, sir.
I just want, I just want, my reasoning behind it and one of the things that we're gonna have to look at and see is our finances. Is, is it more of a cost to have to vote in two different places than it is to vote in more? I just ask. It's going to cost us more to vote in two different places than it is to vote? In fact, that needs to be taken into consideration because we're gonna have to make a lot of tough decisions about our finances.
We voted five districts at one point in time, I'd have to go back and research it, but we voted five districts in the Civic Center and, uh, I have to go back and, because I, I remember I had a setup, it was just totally different meaning than we'd ever had before, but we'll go back and, and look at that. But anyhow, we'll carry this over to the, uh, to the next agenda, the next meeting. Is that sufficient? Thank you. Okay, so the next item will be approve of recurring cost of Cotton Lake Street lax and a cost of twelve dollars and thirty-six cents monthly. This is a second read. Do we have a motion to move forward?
Seven.
Second. Second.
Have a second. Okay, all in favor, if you don't want to say an aye?
Aye.
And want to oppose? So, that has carried. And then item three would be to approve elevator repair and administrative building for a cost of six thousand and twenty-three dollars. Do we have a motion to move forward with this?
Seven.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Seven. Washington.
Have a motion on the second, any discussion? All in favor, if you don't want to say an aye?
Aye.
You don't want to oppose? So, that too has been approved and it is just not functioning now. It's, it's a dead scam still, so. Under new business this evening, permission to enter contract with Daktronics for video board at the new athletic field and sell advertising and sponsorships. Do we have a motion to move forward with this?
This is for the bars, Mayor, we want to wait until the next meeting.
Yes, sir. Okay, so the money will be expended or is paid back?
Right, with the sponsorships.
Paid back with the sponsorships. Okay. I'd like to share one other thing with you, if you would, yes, sir.
Uh, we have a discussion on this.
Yes, sir.
The bond, it's worth, where the bond is kind of on paper?
It's not a bond issue.
Bond issue. So... And then the amount is... At on page one of five, it turns a three percent with order of six percent payments before shipping. So, that's, it would be broken down in two payments or not?
I, I really, there, there's some things about this that I don't... I don't know if it's paid for in one payment. I was told that when it's put in place, that's when we pay for it. So, whether it, when we order it, we put up fifty percent of it?
I don't think we have to. I think the members installed, we have to pay for it, but they don't even begin building it and assembling everything until we approve it.
We have to approve it first.
But my question is, I'm looking here, it isn't right here on page one and seven. I'm reading what's in writing here. It said a quote from ninety-eight, turns thirty percent with order, sixty percent payments before shipping.
Councilman, Councilman, thirty percent has already been raised toward paying for, for this board.
You said raised?
Yes, and sponsorships.
You, you just told me it was going to be paid for out of bond money, now you tell me?
Well, it pays back the bond money. If we have to put anything up front, it comes out of bond money, but it would be paid back by selling the sponsorships on the board.
Well, if you don't raise the money... If you don't raise the full amount, so the only difference will come out of bond money is what money that it went raised now. Who is raising this money and, uh, how, how, how are we going about raising the money? What's the procedure?
I have raised a big portion of this. The company that we're dealing with will send a team in here. They will also sell advertising to pay for the board.
So, you could raise the money for the board?
I hope to raise the money for the board.
You're giving three different answers again. I asked you a specific question. First, you told me it was coming from out of bond money. That's the first you told me. Now, you're coming back with another answer. So, which is the truth of answer?
Truth is, it has to be paid out of the bond money, it will be paid out of the bond money. We will sell the advertising on the board to cover the cost of the board. If there's anything taken out of the bond money, it will be reimbursed into the bond money.
If you don't mind? Look at page five of, uh, left top. If you may, give the mayor someone to read that piece, sir?
If you're talking about the leasing, that's only if you choose to lease and I believe we're gonna pay for it.
Okay. Now... Page one of three, responsible parties. Mayor, could you get someone to talk to me on that piece, sir?
Page what?
One of three. On quote.
The responsible party would be the city is paid for and then he said it would be reimbursed back into the...
Look, look, okay, you talked...
The, uh, channel.
Okay. Look, oh, well...
When the ads are sold, so the city would be the responsible party for it, is that correct?
Look at what it says, Council. I'm clear on that, I have three different answers.
Okay.
Now, look to the left, that's what it says, see where those checks are? And if you look out there up to the far right, is that saying that the city is responsible doing all these other things that, uh, the site cleanup, creative and shipping of all equipment?
That's all in the book, right?
No, you're the free, read for yourself because it said install, installation responsibility to check this.
Yes, and you'll see on the very back page that there's a second to last, there's also a quote, uh, for the installation, uh, that that covers a lot of that other thing.
No, no, I'm not reading the back page, that's clear. I'd be open to print page of three, on all those checks. If you look under there, it says engineer, design, and certification, fire structure and, uh, footed design. Are we responsible for that? Prime and paint structure, uh, that all that comes up on the bond?
It comes, it comes with the sand being furnished by Daktronics.
Now, there's a duty on the quotation that's paid on all of those with that. On the scope, see it? All of those with that. Quarter and a half, seven nine one.
That's the installation.
That's what now?
Installation of the board itself.
The last page?
Yes, yes.
The one that says quotations, word for sales and servicing.
It'll be built, that part of it will be built on site, the framework will be built on site, the big poles that it has to go on, uh, is, is part of it, it'll all be built and then Daktronics comes in then and installs the board, the Jumbotron board into this with the panels around the sides that can be sold as advertising, uh, sponsorships, okay? And then by being a Jumbotron, an electronic board, you can also sell advertising during the ball games that would run electronically on the board. Uh, there'll be a number of, of, of panels on the board, there'll be stationary boards that will be sold for a long length of term, which would give people, you wouldn't be going back to them every year selling them that sign, it would be for a long length of time. So, this started off as roughly a four-hundred-thousand-dollar project, was negotiated down and brought it down to a three-hundred-and-thirty-five-thousand-dollar project, including installation. And then we've had commitments to this point, if we can get back to them contract-wise, what we talked to you about, is we've raised a hundred thousand dollars to this point, paid against the three-thirty-five, which gets us down to two-thirty-five. Given the opportunity to sell these sponsorships on the remaining part of the board, we can pay for the board without any issues whatsoever. If we do not sell all of these, Daktronics comes in with their team and they actually put together the advertising programs and sell the remaining sponsorships. They've done it all over the country, we're not the first ones they've ever done this with, but they have to have a contract in order to move forward. That's simply what we're asking for from the council, is to give us the authority to enter into a contract with Daktronics to where we could hopefully have this in place if they play football. We don't know that yet. If they play football in August, for it to be in place, up and going. So, it's something that this city has never had, there's few cities surrounding us have this, Opelika has one, we've been to Opelika and looked at theirs and talked with the mayor back over there again today, as to their satisfaction with this company and how they went about theirs. So, that's simply what we're... So that's simply what we're asking for to, for whatever reason, it won't be voted on tonight, is my understanding correct? It'll be back on the agenda at the next meeting, and we'll ask this council to approve that at that meeting, to where we can move forward with this board. Any other questions?
Okay, so let's sit in the end zone, or catty corner like I'm like, do we know yet?
It'll be in the end zone, I think it's kinda gonna be, uh, catty cornered in the end zone, somewhere close to where the home dressing room is going to be. Home dressing room will be on the MLK side, the vistas dressing room and locker rooms will be on the sports complex side, uh, which each will have their separate concession stands also, with the VIP building in the middle, which if you've been by there, the roof are already on the two of the buildings, waiting to put the roof on the other, the slabs already been pulled for the vistas locker, locker room, waiting to pull the slab for the home side locker room. This is not only the football field that we're building, that's not it. We're building a world-class track to go there, that has been a desire of this community for a long time to have that, and to let, to allow our athletes to be a part of a program such as this. We know that in doing this, that it becomes an economic development tool for us that will draw numerous events to this city, which will help us in developing other hotels and motels and restaurants in this city. Uh, we've had conversation for the small college stuff, division two, division three college stuff that we can have here. There's an animal called travel track that is, is big time, it is a big time operation, that they bring numerous people into your community. So we, this was an opportunity that this council took some, uh, while back when we entered into a bond issue, and you allowed the mayor and the clerk and representatives to go to Washington, to New York, I'm sorry, and secure the money for this, and this is just the first part of what this bond issue will pay for. So it, it's been a deadline that we're fighting, we hope we're gonna play football, we don't know. But we hope that some relief is going to come with this virus, and we can move forward and, and let it produce for us. Uh, I appreciate the leeway you've given me to be a part of negotiating these things, uh, and, and it's working, folks, it's working. It depends on what you want for your city. If you don't want this for your city, you know, that's you. But I think the majority of this council wants this and is proud to serve this city and provide where we can provide. And we can make this happen, and we can produce this, and we can pay for this. So it, it's not a backup time right now, we're in this thing too far and too deep to be looking at backing up and trying to take another route, just because we don't like something. So I think it's a, it's a great opportunity for us, as we move forward, trying to make Weetunka the best it can possibly be. Our children deserve it, and nobody can say that this city has not provided for the youth of this city, because we've got a twenty million dollar investment sitting over there, in a sports complex, as we speak. And that doesn't count what we're adding to it with this. So as far as a city, go to the cities around us and see what they're talking about now, they're talking about Weetunka. They like what Weetunka is doing. So it's time for us to move on and, uh, work through all these discussions and, and we'll put it back on the agenda for the next meeting.
Mayor, let me, let me say something.
This is gonna be your third time to speak to, uh.
Pardon me?
It's gonna be your third time to speak to this issue, you're only allowed two, I'm gonna give you one more time to speak to this.
No, 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 I don't want you to think that I'm asking for something different, I would not speak, but make sure you do it where everybody is, thank you, ma'am. Make sure you do that.
Motion to adjourn? Someone, okay, now I'd like to speak to you, cut those cameras off.